State that you get, can you just say it? And this is a test. Sir?
See there at the top of the bomb.
Or the middle or the side or left or the right. If you would have been looking, y'all would be looking at these bank statements. Mr. Brenner works hard to get those bank statements. Okay? And if y'all would be looking at y'all bank statements and now we got before when Mr. Bradshaw was mayor, but all of a sudden when Mr. Long and Mr. Bradshaw arrived and now we gotta get, y'all gotta get the bank statement. And let me explain to you people, the bank statement isn't that, isn't that, isn't that low. And this is what Mr. Brenner has to do for everybody on his couch. And y'all don't even look at it because y'all don't even know whether cash or credit's in the debit.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Back to my question. So, okay, so we have one hundred and seventy-five thousand in the spending funds. We're wanting to take forty thousand out of the spendable funds, but we're going to leave thirty-five thousand. So we're really not affecting the contingency money at all.
No, ma'am.
That's what I'm getting confused. So we're leaving that in place.
Yes, ma'am. What I would like to do, Ms. Burge, is in my mind, when I got in here and I got to become mayor and I saw and I went over the time finances, because you can ask Joanne, I spend a lot of time on this, on this finance, so don't let you that. The bank statement is in this, this monthly report. So every, every year we should have been putting thirty-five thousand in the bank. Right now we would have, right now we would have a hundred and five thousand dollars in the bank. So I would like to see us take that forty thousand, put it on the court, take another thirty thousand and put it in the bank. So we would have sixty-five thousand in contingents.
And that would leave us a hundred and eleven.
Yeah.
And that leaves us a hundred and five as money.
Yes, believe us, a hundred and five in the bank now. And between, between now, between January and June, last year we made eighty-five thousand dollars. We had thirty-seven thousand debt, so I'm going over the numbers again because I know they're all fast. And we had an over of forty-eight thousand dollars. And like I said, the last six months is, is normally in the negative. The last six months from July to December of the town's budget is, not budget, but the bank statement is usually in the negative. Okay, so that, that averages out. So last year with us averages probably making around four.
Can I ask a question, Honorable Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Seems to me that this would be a logical conversation to have during the budget discussions.
No, I want that forty thousand dollars put in the court. I want us right now to think about this and look at these numbers and figure out this simple math and figure, Melissa, you got it, right?
Yeah.
Pretty simple, right?
Yeah, and we talked about it when we were doing the American Rescue Plan. That was our goal, is we wanted to put uneven one hundred thousand into the park.
Well, nobody, everybody shot it down.
Well, I don't think we ever reducted the point of vote because we were, we were focused upon this only. So what I'm trying to change is, so you want to take the forty thousand from our, right now our general fund, take another sixty-five or another, excuse me, thirty thousand and move it to the contingent plan or fund, so we have sixty-five thousand still in contingent funds and a hundred and five left.
Yeah, and I, into our, in our spendable.
How, I don't, we don't have a budget sheet in our, our normal budget thing, but, so our annual budget, how's it gonna affect us if we reduce our general fund, one hundred and five thousand in the spending funds to cover our budget?
The budget has nothing to do with the bank. The budget, the budget is all, the budget is, is our, our, um, um, map or our goals on what we want to spend, how we want to spend. The budget is a projection on how he want the town to work. The budget has got nothing to do with the money that we have in the bank or how much money we spend. The only way you can find out how much money we spend is a take that bank account that Ms. Brenner's been giving to y'all and look right up in that top left-hand corner. And there's two numbers you gotta look at. You gotta look at debits and credits. And you look at if it's, if it's more, the numbers are bigger on the credit side, on the check side, then that means it's gonna be a negative. If the number is bigger on the deposit side, that means it's gonna be a positive. I'll tell you all my, every one of these, you can look at every one of mine, either a positive or negative with a number, telling you how much money we made or how much money we spent that month. So that's what leaves us with.
Well, yes, but maybe I should break through my question. So some of the items in our budget are items that we may be pulling from our general fund to use for those budget items. I wanna make sure, that's what I'm saying, I wanna make sure that we have a hundred and five thousand will cover those items on our, on our annual budget that we are pulling from.
Well, when you look, okay, well, when you look at the breakdown, when you look at the deposits and the checks, okay, the checks come off that budget as well. Any money that we spend come out of the general fund will be, will be what we're gonna call checks. Okay, that's on the budget, on the, on the expense side. On the revenue side, you'll never see that because we make the revenue up as we, for our budget. You got me? But there, there is a revenue side in our check, in our checking account. The checks, the check side.
Right, I get what you're saying is, what you already anticipate is our annual income is going to cover the general fund budget items without even looking into this hundred and five thousand. Is that what, oh, so that's what I'm trying to, okay.
It should, because we got some big heavy months. February twenty-seven thousand, um, March, uh, I mean, April three thousand, May eleven thousand. This is the money that we collected. In June we get forty-two thousand, that's our biggest month, June. And we've got, and I said, this at the last budget meeting, we, we did get a little bit more added on to some of the, um, taxes and stuff because everybody's here. So my, I don't want us to sit, I want us to spend sixty thousand dollars on this court and we do that old court. I want us to take forty thousand dollars that we have, the town and society here, and I wanna put it with that sixty thousand and make brand new court. So think about it and we can vote on it next meeting. Yes, sir.
Mayor, I'm talking about the budget this far. Where is the listed here, the expenditure that we spend on the ceiling for the fire department? Has that ceiling been replaced yet?
Uh, no, sir, it hasn't.
How long ago has that been since that ceiling fell down?
I don't know, but, um, these got the quotes. Mike, the guy from the school association has quotes. So we should be getting the answer. It's gonna cost us a thousand dollars, their quote's thirty-three hundred dollars. It's gonna cost us a thousand dollars deducted. So all we're gonna spend for that ceiling is a thousand dollars.
But need to get done, and I am not agreeable to you, that is muddy as water, what you're saying. This need to be taken up in terms of changing our, our reserve funds to, we need to be taking it up. When we do our, when we get in the budget session, we'll be a couple more from now on. And the way you're saying things, the budget is very important. It tells you everything and things that come in. You can't go by these bank accounts. These bank accounts be high and low, you can't just jump at something according to what you think you got in the bank. I'm not, I don't feel good about that at all.
I understand, Mr. Bradshaw, you didn't feel good about a lot of things that you, you was wrong about. But I took the time for the past three years that I've been the mayor and I've been watching the bank account. And I've been doing my homework, Mr. Bradshaw, and I know you can't do it, but I can do it as well.
Well, you can give a.
So I need to know, I need, I'm gonna make a motion. I make a motion that we take, we're not gonna mess with this, sir. I make a motion that we take forty thousand dollars of the town's, of society hill's money and put it with the sixty thousand dollars from the American Rescue Plan and put a brand new court in over here at town hall. That's the motion I'm making. We can't discussion unless I get a second, if I don't get a second, the motion dies. So is there a second? If there's no second, this, the motion dies. All right, let's move on.
I do have a question. We had voted on the sixty thousand dollars for this, Mr. Webb's, the one in the park. Was that to, wasn't that to, I don't want to say repair, it was, it was not to replace? Now, had we already signed the contract?
Yes, we had to have that signed by December thirty-first, the P O.
So, okay, so we have that signed with him, are we not obligated to move forward with him?
Yeah, but we can move forward with him and give him forty thousand. I got this, the.
But guess what I'm asking? Would this person be able to transition from repair to replace?
He's the one who gave us the bid on it first time.
Okay.
For us to get the grant, so yes, he could, there's no doubt about it. But that motion's dead.
I got a question about Ms. Lady's income. It says donation for tree.
Care's out. Care's out, donate the money for the Christmas gift.
Is that the one that Dick Baird was, was doing?
Yes, sir. All right, there's no other questions?
That's a live tree out there.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Five hundred and twelve dollars. And get them charged us nothing, put it in, God bless you. There's no, any other questions about the financial report? Moving on. Committee reports, police, the ball, chief.
Mr. Mayor, the council, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Uh, what you have, uh, we're always talking about the month before, so we're talking about December. You have nineteen citations written and they're broken down with two vehicles in unsafe condition, three summonses for disallowing sign or signal, one accident resulting in falling to a footfall, one reckless driving, two speeds between fifteen over and under twenty-five miles per hour speed limit, two summonses for in excess of twenty-five miles per hour speed limit, three driver license violations, two vehicle license violations, two driving under suspensions, and one non-traffic offense. You had five warnings or public contacts that were written. Four reports, one drug narcotic violation, that was a possession of cocaine, one weapons law violation, convicted felon in possession of a firearm, and two driving under suspensions, that account for your reports. Two arrest warrants written in this judge, one for the possession of cocaine and one for the convicted felon in possession of a firearm. We have court on December fifth, and one judge, Judge Moore presided, nothing outstanding from there. Everything went as well and went well. Administratively, we are proceeding with the vehicle decommissioning on the Charger that will be taken to V E I this week and totally stripped of all police equipment and brought back, and I'll make a recommendation to the council at that meeting as to the fair market value for the price of that vehicle, if we do seal this or however we'd like to proceed with that. The electronic speed signs that we ordered, that we got through the rescue plan are in, they're sitting in the corner over here with soul panels. We have to put those together, charge the batteries, and they'll be up and running. Flo Cameron and I have been on Zoom calls this week. We have signed all the proper paperwork. I have two, two landowner permission slips I have to get signed and send back, and we were in the process, they will be here to set those cameras up and they will be up and running. Upcoming for many administratively, um, couple things didn't, I didn't email it to you because they haven't happened yet. We had two calls for service with the county under our mutual aid agreement that we had to go on to the county and assisted them outside the county city limits of Society Hill. One was on breaking and entering in Russell Road that we intervened in, that we got there way before the deputies got there and held everybody for the deputies. And, um, the second was a wreck outside of the town that they requested assistance on, the fatality that happened along fifty-two the other day. Uh, we assisted with that under our mutual aid agreement with the county. I have all the new mutual aid agreements on my calendar, surrounding jurisdictions. They will be signed by our people, myself and the mayor and Ms. Nudles tomorrow, and I will go to the respective jurisdictions and that will bring us into compliance with twenty twenty-five mutual aid agreements we have with surrounding jurisdictions. On my planning calendar of this upcoming, I am meeting with citizens, churches, civic organizations for upcoming events for twenty twenty-five to go ahead so I can put a blanket operational plan in place for upcoming events, whether it's Catholic, Catholic grade civic organizations that need traffic control or any kind of festival or process that the churches are having so we can have a pre-planned organizational plan before it happens. That way we won't be behind the curve, we can be ahead of that and already have a plan and set up and better again. Be happy to, be happy to answer any questions that the council or citizens have.
I got a question on page three, there's a bunch of names there that I just should not get.
I cannot send it to you next time, I just print it out with the court documents.
Okay, I, yeah, I prefer not to know any names if anybody can get to.
We'll take care of that, sir. No, let me know.
I want, I would like that because they're in the newspaper anyhow. A matter of fact, when I saw it, I was, okay.
Are these people incarcerated?
They are, it's, it's, it's public access information, Mr. Bradshaw. It's, it's, it's public documents, so it's allowed. Those are anything that comes, yeah, anything that comes through, anything that comes to court is a public document, so it's, it's subject to be released at any time.
All right, no more questions, can we move on? Juliette, one speed at a time.
Are we done?
Well, yeah, I can wait.
Yeah, we're done. Chief, you're done, man.
My question to, to council, the mayor, the chief, whoever.
Did you sign up? You can only talk.
No, I just want to talk about what the chief, he asked, did we have anything to say? It's nothing about what he said, but you know, he was talking about, uh, how about the people that stay, just stay in there? The people that stay this way outside of town then? If you called the sheriff's department of Chesapeake County, it takes them over hours to get there. I was just wondering why he couldn't assist on some of them, say a mile or two out in town then? I just asked the chief.
He does, he does.
Your thoughts, perfectly logical question. If you dial nine-one-one where we're standing right here, you may get Marlboro County, you may get Chesapeake County, and you may get Darlington County, or you may get highway patrol, and that's just the way the towers are set up and whichever tower picks up your call. But to answer your question, we participate in a mutual aid agreement with the surrounding counties. So I have ones for Chesapeake County, Marlboro, Bennettsville, Sheraw, Harson, Darlington, Darlington County, and Darlington City. I have to be authorized and asked by that jurisdiction to come into that jurisdiction to handle something. I can't go on my own. I don't have the authorization and I don't have the authority to do that. How we, how we got these other two, the shift supervisor through the patrol captain, asked for my assistance, and that has to happen that way for me to go.
I, I understand that, but I'm saying.
But we got paperwork that he's gonna be able to.
I understand that, but I'm saying, the people live, say, three miles this way in the Chesapeake County. Why can't, and it say, you got a side hill address, even though you in Chesapeake County. Why can't y'all come up with some kind of agreement with Chesapeake County? That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
You're getting into, you're getting into an authority issue with me because I have, I would have to be cross sworn in each jurisdiction for that to happen. Our mutual aid agreement covers, covers assistance needed by that jurisdiction. If they need an extra body or just like the county, their deputies are tied up and cannot get to something and it's within a reasonable distance of our jurisdiction, that's why they made that request and I went. Now, obviously, if it's a life or death, I, I don't hear what goes on in Chesapeake County. I'm not on that radio system, I don't have that. But if it were something that became to light, that was a life or death situation, we would go handle that and then we would handle the jurisdiction issue.
But in the past, and I'm not talking about putting town study, I love study, but the past, that has happened and it took them over an hour to get. I just, I don't understand that when the people outside county lines has got a side hill address.
Chief, that, um, form that we signed.
That's a mutual aid agreement.
Mutual aid, so you don't have their radio, so they would call you, that's mutual aid. They gonna call you when they need help, right?
What they'll do is, I don't, I don't monitor their radio system because Chesapeake County is one of the few armed force jurisdictions that doesn't have a trunk system, meaning I can't monitor on the radio system that we have in all the county. The radio interoperability grant, and Mr. Bradshaw will know about that because it happened during his term, a lot of jurisdictions fell short and did not upgrade their radio dispatch system coming that interoperability bill by South Carolina legislature. So I can't monitor anything that they have. We are up to date with our radio system. I listen to highway patrol, Darlington City, Harson, Darlington County all day long because I scan on our radio.
But what I'm asking you is, if you can't hear them on the radio and we got this agreement, how will you know something?
Their dispatch will call our dispatch and they give me the address, just like, just like the county. The county just happened to be on my frequency and actually called me in person and said, hey, are you, if you're not busy, can you go until we get there?
So it's a dispatch thing?
It's a dispatch thing, yes, and that's, and that, there are procedures and protocols in place for that to occur, should they need assistance.
Any other questions? You gotta get going, it's ten o'clock. Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it, man. All right, one speed at a time, one speed we got here. Yeah, it'd be nice to see some council members come and pick up trash because there's two of them got trash all over the back of it, y'all.
Graham, hit me up, you did Graham?
Uh, no, no, we haven't done Graham, nope.
Okay, Graham.
Nope, Graham Street, what's the date? What's the date, can you see the calendar? The twenty-fifth? Yeah, the twenty-fifth, January the twenty-fifth, nine o'clock, Graham Street, right down off of Church Street, when you come to it, it's right there. Okay, let's move on. Next thing is the whole business, we're looking at Professor's Park. I believe we cleared that up with the lawyer. So Professor Park, going in.
Yes, I have something I want to say about that. But I was gonna, you talked about the playground area. I wanted to speak on the playground issue, um, to some new people here tonight that weren't here last time, and I'd like to be a pride that while I'm talking about so that they can hear the whole story. And the whole story, and I want to preface by the goal of, and y'all, some pertinent informations concerning the broke playground at Professor's Park. Firstly, let me ask that the mayor and you all both, nobody interrupt me until I'm finished my presentation. Let me preface my first stating again and again. Let's start off by saying, as you all should know, the county has never had an opportunity to discuss the Professor's Playground idea. We have only discussed the town hall playground that is to be replaced, is in bad shape, with the new modern town playground for the town. In twenty fifteen, when the Professor's Park property was transferred to the Alton County School District down to Bag End, I, as mayor, met several times with Conell Blaine and the school superintendent, Tim Newman. It was well understood that the purpose of this park property was to establish an historic venue or site to commemorate the Rodenwall faculty from back on years. Conell has spoken to me about how he liked the decoy being idea and he thought that it would also serve a similar purpose for the Rodenwall professor to make a beautiful place for family gatherings, picnics, picnics, et cetera. We all agreed this would be a great way to immortalize Rodenwall professors and their history. So I asked, why would we turn an historical site commemorating Rodenwall faculty from back, back on year into a children's playground? This should be a place of remembrance for the contributions the professors gave to the Rodenwall School and to Bag End. I personally, and I'm sure many others, if you think about it, would hate to see this valuable resource lost for a playground. Please, please let's leave this valuable resource with the beautiful live oak for the purpose it was constructed and not a playground. I need to be, it needs to be a quiet, rest place for grownups to appreciate history, Rodenwall history. Furthermore, the property is not suitable, is not a suitable location for a playground, especially with the, with the park there. There's the utility even on front, on Church Street, on the plaza, third and fourth street, and it goes back along the fence and it's twenty feet wide at the back. Poor the people part, there wouldn't be sufficient room there for a playground, there just simply wouldn't. The Professor's Park would develop and be appreciated and joined and enjoyed by grownups to commemorate history, not for a playground. Rodenwall School and its alumni deserve better, Society Hill deserves better. Please remember our history. Secondly, I discussed with Charlie Barinow, and he informed me the town's our size and sometimes twice our size only have one centrally located playground. We're one town, one community, one people, and this is centrally located. This is what we need and we need it for. He's granted all the needs in our case for a new playground that has sufficient parking, bathrooms, increased security, and the town site, that the town hall site enjoys out here with cameras and everything else. He also felt, he also said, the park ground, so that he felt that if we reached out to the park grant people, we would not lose this grant money, this fifty thousand dollars that been given to the town. Instead, we could just transfer the money to the Society Hill Town Hall Playground. Okay, also, also, please, also, since I read this message last time on December nineteenth, I have learned that the Donkey County School District will transfer the Rodenwall School to the Rodenwall Foundation at the end of the school year. The playground behind Rodenwall is right across the street, it's in a football dip that's from it. Still no reason why a playground should not be put on a location dedicated to memorialize Rodenwall professors. Got the playground right across from that. Again, I want to reiterate, this Professor's Park issue is completely wrong. It was wrong that the mayor has never discussed or even brought the idea about the two parks for consideration in any council meeting, never, ever must let a vote. All, all the council has talked about, the first of this year, all the council has ever talked about was updating and seeking a park grant for the town hall at Society Hill this one. The mayor, our mayor hangs his hat on this fragmented paragraph in the February twenty twenty-four meeting that he takes completely out of context. I did make a motion to second a motion made by Mrs. Birch because I and Melissa knew that if the mayor got a grant, it would be, it would surely be for the playground at South Town Hall because that's all we've ever discussed at the town hall, at the town council. And I, and I also, I knew that the town, also at the time that he would mention about this two hundred thousand dollar behind the sky that he was gonna get to put three playgrounds in Society Hill, I knew that the state would never approve two hundred thousand dollars with three playgrounds and a town would, would just owe four hundred people. The state would not even consider such a request and especially not flinch such a request. And so, so that is, um, that is what I'm saying here. This is, this, I'm sorry for the community members in the Rodenwall community. If you, if you, please don't feel, we want to protect what you got there. Professor Park is not suitable for a playground. It needs to be upgraded and we need to raise those live oak trees and it's a beautiful site to be enjoyed for the purpose of which Conell and Blaine and we constructed it for. This is not a site for a playground. And secondly, we need this one done and it's gonna cost the money. And that's all we've ever discussed, we have never discussed this here. The mayor, Melissa will agree with me, I'm sure, that she made that motion to accept the match because we had never discussed anything but this playground. And I seconded that same motion, and that's all the mayor's got to hang his hat on because the council has never discussed this whatsoever and never even put two votes. So it's completely wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong, I swear it's wrong. If you ever believe me, it's wrong and it's not right.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bradshaw. I'm gonna go ahead and read February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, this says that, uh, Mr. Long, he said that Professor's Park also needed to be addressed. Okay, February. Okay, the next thing, I'm gonna read one more thing and we're gonna move on, y'all. Um, this is what the mayor said, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. The mayor said we could get a hundred thousand dollar grant for the brand new park. We could get forty-five thousand dollar grant on Professor's Park and fifty thousand dollar grant at the boat lane. That's the same paragraph that we voted on that, y'all, same paragraph. This is the main, so I don't, Mr. Bradshaw, and I'm, I'm sure Melissa's not gonna agree with him, but anyhow, Mr. Bradshaw, the money is, the check, twelve thousand five hundred dollars is gonna be checked written and Professor Park is gonna have a playground.
Amen.
Thank you, for your comments.
May I say something?
Not really. Not really, babe, I, I really want you to, but I can't.
May I see?
You can put your name on it.
In February, when the mayor apprised us of the fact that he was, he had, and was seeking two hundred thousand dollars, he never once, he never once, he simply told us what he was doing. He never once asked us for any advice, any consent, or did we agree to any kind of discussion whatsoever. He just simply told us what he was doing. He never, we never discussed it, but we have been discussing this playground and that's what we assumed.
Well, the truth, well, the match don't say that.
It's the truth. The minute, the minute they're fragmented and, and out of context, this minute, me and Ms. Birch.
Answer me.
Made this, made this, made this motion to get a match and, and we were thinking, any reasonable person that was seeking these grants for three playgrounds, even if he had said that.
Please don't, please don't disbelieve me by saying unreasonable in, in, in butchered voice to me.
Well, it's not funny, you can put us down any other way you want, your mayor. And you, this guy will just check tonight, and you are ashamed of it. That is not a leadership, that's what's wrong with this town today. We don't have leadership, we don't have this, or we don't have this problem. And we, we're tired of it.
There's only two problems, and that happened in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, we know.
But anyhow, let's move on. Concrete on the sidewalk, now.
I'd like to mention something.
About Professor's Park?
Yes.
We buying that park, y'all can mention all y'all want, go ahead.
So what Mr. Bradshaw was referring to is the motion that was made. I do know that it was my belief and understanding when I went home and filled out the grant application myself, which is all my debt. which is on my desk, was for the main park, um, the covenant. That was our intent. We were then asked, and I know you remember this, mayor, I know you do, that you asked us to stand down on submitting that grant. And we did, so it still sits on the desk. Because you had informed us that we were gonna be getting a significant amount of money via center of the hall at the time, so we stood down and we waited. But we never furthered any discussion on any of the specific parks. All we ever really discussed was that, because we were waiting with that grant, and we was waiting. And so, everything was kind of put on hold until the next thing we saw was the grant that you requested for Professor's Park. And I believe, from understanding what Mr. Bradshaw is saying, and I think he's correct, we've never said we did not want, just like you read in the minutes, he mentioned, we need to do something with Professor's Park. We've never declined doing anything as a council to Professor's Park. We declined it in that moment with that grant that was submitted that we had not gone through proper council for. That's what we were talking about. We still want to do work on Professor's Park. And based on what Mr. Bradshaw has explained, we are a town of four hundred and sixteen people. We have less than one percent of our population is of playground age, and that's including the entire two-nine-five-nine-three zip code. That's not just our actual town municipality. So there is a very limited need for playground of any proportion. A town of our size, it only makes sense that we have one park to suit our community. I believe, as Ms. Thomas said, it's a we thing, it's an our community thing. Our small township of four hundred and sixteen people are very well suited and accommodated for one park as one community. We don't need all these parks. It, it, it's not representative of a unified community. And, and affordable. We have to be fiscally responsible. Now, we are a small town. We are not Hartsville, we are not Arlington, we are not Columbia, we're not any of these large towns. We need to be fiscally responsible, and that is our job and our duty as a council, is to manage the money that is put in our care by, by the taxpayers, and we're taxpayers ourselves. We are trying our best to be fiscally responsible. This isn't an individual agenda in any shape, form, or fashion. What we are trying to do is manage our town as a town and be fiscally responsible. And it has been very difficult for each one of us. When we are trying to do that, we face accusations, we face all kinds of this ugliness, and it makes our job very difficult as well. You know, when we speak, you know, we should be treated, we respect each one of us. We are trying to contribute to being sound members of our own community. We are all members of this town. And what we are trying to do is make judgment calls that takes care of our money and our future. And I believe many of the folks here have spoke about our legacy for what's to come in the future. What children will come here. We want them to have a nice park. And if we put a hundred thousand dollars into redoing that entire park, this town of four hundred and sixteen people is gonna have a park that can be very parallel, that everyone will enjoy. No matter where you are in this town, you're, you're less than a mile from getting to that park. It's, it's, it's not like we're asking people to travel across many, many miles to get to a, a nice park that has bathrooms and security. Since Rosenwall Foundation has been able to take, fabulously take Rosenwall School, that is wonderful. There is a fabulous children's park right behind that school that is brand-new, it is lovely. I've seen it myself, okay, it is accommodated, it is approved by all agencies and everything. And I know Rosenwall Foundation is going to be more than happy to open that park up to the children of Church Street community. There's no doubt in my mind. And so, why would we put of, of money into across the street putting playground equipment when it's right across the street? And there's proper parking at the school, there's proper safety and, and security for those children. Whereas right there on the street, there's not. There's not proper lighting, there's nothing there. We can take our money, put it into Professor's Park, and make that a beautiful memorial park that is intended to, to honor these professors and all these people of the community as they should be honored, and have a wonderful place there for people to enjoy. And the children can still play across the street. We're not trying to disparage anyone's ideas and thoughts and family or anything. We're trying to do what's right for our town as a whole. That's it. Um, I know back in, um, December, I made a motion, and I don't know that it's even necessary, but I do remember that it's on the books. So I feel like to correct that procedurally, that I need to make a motion to rescind the motion that I made in December regarding reapplying for the park grant to Professor's Park, because I don't believe it's necessary for us to do it. But I do think I need to have that motion rescinded by making a motion to rescind that motion.
I'll submit that motion.
All in favor, who was first to rescind, we'll rescind.
I don't know what that is.
Signify by saying aye. All opposed, say nay. Nay. Let the record show one's nay and four's aye. Okay, uh, but no, sir, no, sir, because listen, you only get two times for any subject, and then that's your second time. So Ms. Birch.
I cannot vote you out. I have something very pertinent on this issue to present.
Okay, you only get two times according to the ordinance. It's for sale, it ain't matter. You only get two times to speak.
I've never read that.
Well, you need to read the ordinance, because you didn't know that the mayor and the court prepared the budget. There's a lot you don't know about that ordinance, okay? So listen, Melissa, you got that grant ready to go, right? You got, tomorrow's the fifteenth. Maybe you should have put it in in December, and you can put it in in January. So make your grant happen, okay? That's first. Second thing, if the mayor of the town do a little bit of maintenance for eight years, you wouldn't have this problem, okay? You gotta be, to work in a town this small to be the mayor of the town and the council, you should be working, okay? You have to physically work. Next on the agenda, concrete on the sidewalk. No, you cannot give the floor on that, on that Professor's Park. You have two times.
I'm here to give you the authority to make the floor.
I want to hear what he has to say.
I want to say something. Um, we said what you said, like, when you made the motion, so that's over with, okay? Now, you came up with something about taking the forty thousand, you know, now add it with the sixty thousand, for the square for the park. Now, I'd rather do the forty, but nobody, you really did that motion. But I'd rather do the forty thousand, because I cannot sit up here, sit up here and live off Church Street, and let y'all just say, y'all can take that fifty thousand and put it over here.
And say.
I, I just got, I, I don't get that aside alone. I just cannot, yeah, y'all sit up here and I'm gonna be on here. Come on, have a vote. Forget about, forget about him. Just, just, that's just a silhouette right here. Just forget about it. And that's just a vote, and, because I'm busy on.
She's not, I already went to the lawyer. There's no con. This is all just con, it's crazy. He said, just what he told me. He said, call him. He said, call him up, call him, Bradshaw.
We shall be.
Call, get his number.
Right on there.
Yeah, I'm gonna write the check. I have authority to write a check. I know what I was telling. Listen, y'all not, y'all not pulling nothing over on me. I already did my homework, I did my P's and Q's, my I's is dotted, my P's are slashed, my periods are put in, everything's done right. I just got off the phone with Mr. Irving, and he spoke to a lawyer that knows government. And everything that we did, by what we done in the minutes, is legal and proper. So this subject really needs to be over.
Ms. Douglas, if I could ask, just what you were just saying. So the forty thousand that mayor had suggested that we pull from general funds to add to the sixty thousand. So what, what you're suggesting is, rather than taking forty thousand from general funds, that we use the grant money.
No grant money, put it over here. No grant money.
But the next, this is something we're going back to take away, we've never discussed.
Yeah, we have, Bradshaw.
Don't you understand?
The next one, we understand what you're saying.
We discussed, we, we made that, it started to be detailed. Just like, we're gonna discuss a lot of stuff with him. But like I said, just hide this space, just forget about him. And just think about doing it, because, please.
It's not, it's not.
It's not, it, it, you got a whole.
This is not anything to do with you. I'm in favor, this is about the town.
It does sound like a brick.
It's this, this is what Ms. Birch just saying, this is about the town.
It is about the town. Now, I'm not saying put up, say it now. I'm not saying that. I'm saying, give us the fifty thousand. That's what I'm saying.
Well, we'll give you money, the budget is necessary to do what needs to be done. We will.
Okay, we need to move on, because this is going nowhere. Nowhere. So we're moving on.
I would like to make a motion.
Can I agree with that? Okay, what you wanna make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that, um, that this thing has gone on long enough. I make a motion that we submit a request to the Thacklen Park Office to formally transfer funds received from Professor's Park Playground to the town, Town Hall Playground.
You shouldn't even be on council, you're not even in your soundbite.
It's like, well, there's someone else to take that, miss from there, and then we go off and have a little talk.
All right, I got it. I got it. That's what you want. That motion's not going to vise, Scooter.
I've got a motion on the floor.
I'm waiting for a second.
So in order to discuss this, you gotta have a second.
You gotta have a second. I'm sorry, y'all, but this is y'all, okay?
We need to continue this discussion. Uh, second.
Who's second? Just, I don't know why y'all trying to just continue this discussion when it's over.
Well, I, I want, I want, what?
Not overrated.
So, Ms. Douglas, so what we're talking about is, we want to put money into Professor's Park. And like you agree, we don't necessarily need your children's playground, but we need to put money into Professor's Park. That's what we're saying. So we need to make sure. So we want to find, where are we gonna, we need to get all the money straight. Where we gonna get it from either the reserve, or we've got the general fund, or we've got the grants.
I'm talking about getting the money from the land, yeah. And the reserve, I mean, the forty thousand, so the general fund.
If I, if I'm hearing this right, we are all in agreement that, we are all in agreement that we want to put money into Professor's Park to renovate, fix it up, beautify, raise, you know, do everything, just to get playground equipment. We also want to replace our main city park. Am I clear? Am I making sense? We are all in agreement, but we need to do those two things.
So you all want to put a playground in?
I can fast forward anything, but, but we, I want fifty thousand dollars. That's what I want. Okay, but we can discuss that later. Well, I want to make sure right now, so we can get the fifty thousand dollars. We're discussing later on what we're gonna do with it. Okay, now I want to do it the right way.
And listen, don't say that. You see, because you're wrong too. Because I don't went to the lawyer, and y'all, I'm, y'all about to see you, okay? Because I'm gonna tell you one thing right now. I already went to the lawyer, and he's not here tonight, but you talk about putting your hands together, Bradshaw? How about that twelve thousand you spent down there, okay? In December twenty-one. Don't start with me.
So you did a little off track.
Yeah, I am. And I'm just letting you know one thing right now. I don't, I don't like, I don't like none of y'all to try to think that I'm doing something illegal. When the lawyer told me everything was good.
The fact of the matter is, it is a legal.
I think, if I'm, mayor, I think what we're saying is, we are all in agreement, actually with you. We want Professor's Park to be properly, money placed into Professor's Park to put it properly, nice, fix it up, and we also want to replace this park. We're not going against you, we're not trying to say no. We're telling you, we're all in the same way. We just want to make sure it's done right. We just want to make sure that it's perceived as sound.
I'm wrong again. The lawyer said I was lying.
Why did we have a public meeting, and we're still discussing? We got a public meeting, we're done.
So sorry, this is, this is a, this is a.
No, this is a public meeting.
Can we please move on? We got four items on the list.
This is, the motion that we forward is set. It has to be covered.
Okay, all in favor of taking the fifty thousand dollars and spending it over here on this park? I don't even know what's your motion, Mr. Bradshaw.
My motion is, I make a motion that we submit a request to the Thacklen Park Office to formally transfer funds received from, from the Professor's Park Playground and the Town Hall Playground, which is the playground described in the cookbook, which is section two thousand and fifteen.
All right, all in favor of Mr. Bradshaw's motion to take the fifty thousand dollars that we received to write a letter for whatever, to the board, uh, and have them transfer that money from Professor's Park to the Town Hall Park Playground. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Let the record show, there's two. All not in favor of this accusation, raise your right hand. Raise your, oop.
I have one more question, I need to.
No question.
I cannot.
Okay, you're not gonna vote?
I'm gonna vote, but I need to ask my question. So if we.
I don't.
If we take the fifty thousand dollars from the grant and apply it to the main park, will we then be able to use our forty thousand dollars from our general fund and apply it to Professor's Park? But I'm trying to, that's how the lawyer put on his motion. You see all the poisonings? Now you follow me? I can't vote on this till I know the answer.
Discussion's over, and we voted, and why are y'all still talking? Now, we're gonna vote again. And I don't want no discussion. Discussion's over. You vote, or you don't vote. You vote yay, or you vote nay. Now, we're gonna take the fifty thousand dollars from Professor's Park. We're gonna tell the board people, we want to transfer it over to Town Hall Playground. Please, Mr. Bradshaw, I know how to say playground. I know what I'm doing here. Believe it or not. Town Hall Playground. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Let the record show, the race show their hand. All not in favor of taking the fifty thousand dollars and putting it on the Town Hall Park, signify by raising your right hand. Let the record show, two people does not want to take that money from Professor's Park.
Now, I'd like to make a, no, I'd like to make a motion that we apply forty thousand dollars from our general fund to be used for the purpose of restoration of Professor's Park. You don't want forty thousand dollars?
No, we got fifty thousand.
We got to see what's needed when budget time comes.
Well, based on what mayor said, we have money.
Hold on, hold on. One at a time, please. Y'all so out of order in this place, we, everybody getting shot cops, and I'm a home device.
I need another public hearing.
And yes, sir, you can believe that, Mr. Long. I would want, I definitely want one, and I give one, uh, for everybody in here.
There's a motion on the floor for forty thousand dollars to be taken from the general fund to be applied to restoration of Professor's Park. And I make this motion based on the fact that mayor has stated that there is the funds available outside of our budgets and by us to cover that expense.
Need a second. Please, no discussion, need a second.
I second for Professor's Park.
Okay, there's a second. Go ahead, Mr. Long.
The, um, I mean, the fact of the matter is, this is kind of what we've all been discussing, but it's not been heard. Uh, some people, well, I'm not gonna get into that. But nevertheless, the fact of the matter is, this is just, uh, there's nothing committing us to doing this other than our intent to do it. There's no, no controls placed on this at this point in time. So at some point, we gotta get the specifics of it. But I'm, I'm okay with doing it now, just for the purposes of moving the ball forward. But we're gonna have to get down to the nuts and bolts of it, and that may be something during the budget time where we can get into the very specifics. Because we were talking about doing improvements, well, one person's improvement is gonna be different from another person's improvement. And the goal here is to improve the town overall, and that's what everybody wants to see happen. So there's no doubt about that. So I'm perfectly fine seconding that motion, and then we can get to the nuts and bolts of it during, during the budget process, which is a very far haul.
Okay, anybody else got any discussion about taking this forty thousand dollars?
I agree with Mr. Long, said the same.
All right, there need more discussion before we vote. And when we vote, I don't want nobody to say you, you want to say something. All in favor of taking forty thousand dollars and putting it down there at Professor's Park, out of the, out of the budget, signify by raising your right hand. Let the record show, the same three voted for that. All in fa, all in favor of not taking forty thousand dollars and not taking the money and putting it down there, signify by raising your right hand. Let the record show, the same two voted for that now. Next on the agenda is concrete for sidewalk. Next on the agenda is concrete for sidewalk. During the, uh, during the, the, the December meeting, we talked about putting the concrete in over at the sidewalk, because it was very dangerous with the way it was copped up, kicked up, and we put it on there, twenty-six thousand. Well, listen, we had, we had to do paperwork, but I did not get Miss Brenda to quote, and by me not getting Miss Brenda to quote, she put twenty-three thousand, because there was no quote papers that we had right here in front of us. Well, the guy did the work, and we already voted on it that we was gonna get the same one, everybody remembers that, we was gonna get the same guy that does the concrete to do the sidewalk, well, he done it. So, we have to vote on this three thousand to come out of the general fund to pay this guy to do the sidewalk.
A second.
Yes, ma'am.
Total or minor, just a portion of it, because it wasn't part of it coming out of the, um, arc of funds?
Yeah, but we already did that, we, we passed that, uh, window, and during that win, we, we had twenty-six thousand in October. December, when we came to the budget meeting, the, uh, American Rescue Plan obligating meeting, the twenty-three thousand was only on there, not the three thousand for the concrete. So, that was, it did not come out of the American Rescue Plan.
So, this is, this isn't part of the twenty-three? This is twenty-three plus three?
Yes, ma'am, there was twenty-six, you had twenty-six written down. The, if, if you want to blame anybody, you can blame me, because I did not get Miss Brenda to the quotes, and these two quotes I had in my email, because I talked, remember I said, the guy said, he, his cheapest quote was three thousand, it's the same one that's doing the concrete back there. So, I make a motion that we take three thousand dollars out of the, uh, out of the general fund and pay Palmetto Precision Concrete to do the sidewalk between the memorial and the playground.
A second.
Any discussion on it?
Now, we just got through talking about taking some money out, because we didn't have anything coming up, and now we're talking about an additional three thousand dollars. There's a disconnect there to me, I don't quite understand that.
I'm gonna say it again, listen, D, in October, yes, ma'am.
No, I was just gonna say the same thing that you were gonna say, you all voted twenty-six thousand dollars, and Melissa had twenty-six thousand dollars on the sheet that she gave me, but when I went through the paperwork looking at the quote, I didn't see anything for three dollars out of the twenty-six, I just saw twenty-three, so that's what I wrote.
That's right, it's not your fault, it's been mine, because I did not get you the estimates, okay? This is not, this is not a finger-pointing thing. The guy did the work, it was very, needed to be done because of the dangers of that sidewalk out there, somebody falling, getting hurt. So, the work was done, we got a motion, we got a second, we got any more discussion about this three thousand dollars for the sidewalk between the playground and the memorial. If there's no more discussion, we're gonna vote. All in favor of taking three thousand dollars from the general fund and, uh, PTC, Concrete Company, to do the sl, uh, concrete walkway between Memorial Park and the playground. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Let the record show your hands. Next on the agenda, beside here, a lot of vote for Rescue Squad building. I thought the Chuck, um, uh, Mr. Charles Stewart, he couldn't be here tonight, but he wants to take and get a vote from the council tonight to put the Rescue Squad in, not the Rescue Squad, to put an ambulance service in our building. And this is what I proposed to him, I asked him what he would need, he said he would need, um, two bays, he's gonna outfit it for back, rescue, not rescue, the rescue's already, he's gonna outfit it for bunk houses, because they got to stay. So, he's gonna need two bays, and I told him that he would need to put a wall up for us to use the third bay for storage. For what he needs, he needs a vote from the council first, that we giving him the okay to use the building for this purpose of an ambulance in the town society here, so he can move forward and get his quotes and get him the money and seeing it, and he said he does have another place to put it within the town, within this, this area, but he would much, when we meet and talk about it, this place definitely fits better for what they need, the Rescue Squad, I mean, the ambulance, EMS, so.
Dalton County, EMS.
I happily make that motion, I make that motion that we allow Dalton County to place an ambulance and service in our, excuse me, and service in our building, absolutely yes.
There is no doubt about it, that's an absolutely fantastic decision, and we're willing to support it in any manner, I'm just wondering, before, if you're calling for a vote tonight, did we need to tie any term, the conditions associated with this, in terms of who pays for what back here? Have you discussed that with you?
No, no, he hasn't, but I, we, well, we didn't, it would, in my opinion, it's just my opinion, I thought it would be just like one Rescue Squad, Mr. Bradshaw.
Well, I would think it'd be not very nice if he come up here and talk with us about the whole thing and explain to us what he wants to do, and then I, I'm willing to bend over backwards and accommodate it in any manner, in any financial manner or any other way.
Okay.
That is absolutely great for.
Okay, then we're just gonna vote for him for giving them permission, because he's a guy.
So, my motion stands, then.
Yeah.
We made a motion, I second.
All in favor of the, uh, those who kind of putting in the EMS back there, signify by raising your right, left hand right. Let the record show was your hands. Um, playground?
Yeah, I got a couple of things I would like to say, which, um, basically is in support of what Mr. Bradshaw and Ms. Burks were talking about earlier in discussions to this, uh, meeting that took place back on the fourteenth, as I recall correctly, where the mayor said we could get a hundred thousand dollar grant on brand new parking equipment, and, and they're exactly right, when we discussed this, it was with the intent of rehabbing this park right here at Town Hall. That's why this application was generated, and that's why these quotes were obtained, and that's why we had all this interaction with Carolina Parks and Play with regards to replacing and repairing, because we discussed this. And, Mr. Mayor, if you would give your legal counsel all the information, that would probably be helpful, because as I said, you know, those minutes from the fourteenth is just convoluted and fragmented. If you go on and you read other minutes, you'll find out that in March twelfth, for example, Town Council meeting minutes, under Town Parks reads, and I quote, "Mr. Long said he was putting together a committee for the rehabilitation of the park and was working with Ms. Burks, since she is working on getting hard grants for parks."
Was that added on that thing?
That's on March twelfth.
Okay, twenty-twenty-four, where is it at, on the right?
In the, under playground. And then if you look at August thirteenth, Town Council meeting minutes, under playground says, and I quote, "Ms. Burks is held up on grant inquiry, waiting to see what we will get from state. The mayor said he and Senator Lloyd will meet this week or next week regarding the two hundred thousand dollars mayor indicated he would be receiving."
Go right.
As I indicated at the last council meeting, the motion that was made was based on this park, this park only.
Um, speaking of legal counsel, this, right this town, uh, Mr. Jay Erwin, by y'all. Have a good night.
Also, also, on September tenth, Town Council meetings, meaning under playground reads, and I quote, "Mr. Long also asked about hard grant. He explained that hard money is separate from other money that we get from the state. The mayor said we were not looking at hard grant funds, period, exclamation point, but that Senator Lloyd would be getting us money from the General Assembly, but yet, a month or so later, he turned around and submits a hard grant, that we didn't know anything about, because we never voted on it.
Never discussed.
Never discussed.
Like in February two, so.
People are getting information that's not completely accurate, because we don't get that information either. So, my point about your attorney, if he, you know, anybody that objectively reads through the minutes of the town will easily reach that conclusion, I'm not even concerned about it. The facts are not in your favor, Mr. Mayor, they're just not.
Well, if they're not in my favor, and the lawyer says they are, and the people say they are, Mr. Long, you, Ms. Burks, and Mr. Bradshaw, don't really have a legal standing, I'm just sorry.
Okay.
And you can call the lawyer and give him all your information, and you give him, that you give us tonight, just now, give it to him, you can go sit down with him, and you can, he's, oh, he's not my lawyer, by the way, he is the town attorney that handles affairs like.
I hope you're not. But he would discharge himself from this issue, because he could represent multiple parties in the same town.
Well, he's not representing no parties at all. If you have, if you have something that you want to say about something that's going on in the town, which we do, which we did, which I got the information from him that I give tonight, that I did nothing illegal, and I did everything properly, and I'm not going.
I hope you did not pay the town attorney to give you this information.
Well, we pay the town attorney every month, Mr. Bradshaw. And it, it, no, I did not pay the town attorney.
You need to, you need to get your own town attorney to be listening to what you're saying, because you're telling it the way you want to tell it, and that's not the truth.
Mr. Bradshaw, his name is John Erwin, his office is in Darlington, the city of Darlington, write it down, call him up, talk to him. I asked him, I said, listen, that council fight me every, two, they truth in there, he said, have him call me.
This has been resolved, ma'am.
No, I'm happy.
I'm not through, um, I also wanted to point out that the, um, the grant document I received via email from the town clerk has a project name called Rosenwall Playground. The town doesn't even own a Rosenwall Playground. The, the project scope says demolition of existing playground and fencing, purchase and install new playground equipment, safety services and fencing, which is exactly what we've been talking about up here all year long. So, I mean, you're, you're just wrong, Mr. Mayor, it's just that.
Thank you for calling me names again.
Don't mention it.
Yeah, you see, y'all see what I put up with, y'all see, and you wonder why, you better hope I don't lose my religion, that's all right.
I didn't really have any.
You better hope I don't lose my religion. So, yeah, let's move on, thank you for your comments, that, Mr. Long, we really appreciate it, appreciate your, uh, that boy stuff. No new business, requests from, comments from the members of council?
I would just like to tell to the attendees here tonight, remember this, remember, well-informed decisions are only made if the people making the decisions are well-informed. That's camp's utmost duty to the citizen, is to be well-informed and make well-informed decisions accordingly, and unless we're well-informed, we can't make well-informed decisions, that's what's led us to this thing. Please understand that, thank you very much.
Melissa?
Um, I believe I sent it to Brenda today, we have, as a council, we have to RSVP to the, uh, Chamber of Commerce, the Burlington Chambers Commerce, the Angel Bank, we're all invited, with the town itself as members, and we are invited to, so we need to RSVP that. Um, and then it was February twenty-sixth at the American Legion at eleven-thirty, and we are all cordially invited, it should be at that time. Um, and also, uh, the Chamber of Commerce also, we were talking about sponsors, and they have asked if we as a town would be a sponsor for the Freedom Fest for Darlington County. Um, however, we would want to talk about it, you know, we can talk about it next meeting, but I did want to mention it, plant seed meals fed, that they have asked that we support Freedom Fest for Darlington County, and I think it'd be an awesome idea for the town to be a sponsor.
Is it money-wise or?
Yeah.
Time-wise, money?
Time, money, you know, whatever we're willing to support, I mean, yes, the materials obviously, um, are more than happy, we would help with the give, but, yeah, in my case, it's, you know, contributor, sponsor.
That's it?
That's it.
Ms. Gary?
Um, I want to thank council for putting that forward. What y'all haven't got, do we, we gotta have a, we gonna see if they're great, and I guess you think maybe they'll give it to you? Maybe, maybe not, we got our forty thousand, I guess we just have to take that, we will take this now, we not angry, we not angry, we not angry people, so we will take that forty thousand, so y'all stay at, we will get that forty thousand.
Mr. Long?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, I appreciate the fact that you take interest, everybody should come out at every meeting, and we should have a back house at every meeting, because it's important to get the information out. Unfortunately, you know, it seems to me that all the information doesn't make its way to the people like it should, but nevertheless, thank you for coming out.
Okay, um, Ms. Burks, are you gonna submit that grant for the park over here?
Um, can't, I need to check on it and make sure that there's an expiration on that particular grant, the actual application that I have may have some documentation that I have to re, you know, just rewrite it.
It should be.
The motion, the motion that we approved is not submitting.
We're not in the meeting, Mr. Bradshaw, this is just my comments, and all I'm doing is asking.
The question is just not proper. We do not have to think of it, what we're doing is asking them to change this grant.
If you don't fill out, please do that, if you filled out the paperwork, submit the grant. What I'm saying, if you took the time, because that wasn't an easy task.
No, it wasn't.
Okay, well then, if you filled out the paperwork, submit.
Do you have a comment with you?
Yeah, but all the players have changed, so there will have to be a number of revisions made.
This is comments, y'all, we're not in the meeting, please, this is my comments, I asked you a question, that was between me and you, not the, not the whole council to get in it, the comments, y'all know nothing about the meeting.
This need to come before it comes from property, the town authority here, and town station here, signed with the mayor, and this is the reaction the council is taking.
Well, you're wrong, Mr. Bradshaw, because I, I'm, I'm very, I'm very good for, I'm not getting into discussion, you're wrong, anyhow, you don't know a whole lot, but anyhow, anyhow, um, citizens' comments?
I'm the only one that signed up.
I think, uh, Bimbo's on there too, right, Bimbo?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ms., Ms., uh.
Number one, I am at every meeting and I am well informed, I know what y'all say, I know what you agreed on, and I know what was done. We need to have another town council, I mean, a, a public meeting, so everything y'all said there, just welcome, you know, the soonest people left, so I need to put it on the first chapter on the agenda, so that we can redisess this, because I want forty thousand dollars, I want the fifty thousand dollars that was earmarked for, here, so I like to put this back on the February agenda, so that we, the town, continues discussing it, not just y'all, y'all make decisions, but y'all are not the only ones that make decisions. And again, I say, remember, November's coming up, and elections have consequences, so I'm always here, I know what was said, I know what was agreed on. So, November's coming up, that, that's only one. Everybody's not up next year, one of y'all up this year.
Okay, Bimbo, what you got, brother?
Oh, you know that, I'm voting up my, uh, for Craig and Longville.
Yes, sir.
Has that been taken care of?
I don't think, I, I, I call Bimbo, but I, you asked, go ahead, I don't, I did, I did not check on that, I do not know if, is it taken care of or not?
No.
I'll take care, I'll do it my personal.
This will happen today.
Okay, I'm taking, it's that sofa in there two bags ago, I'll take care of it, I'll.
That's on from one side, the other side of the road, it gets a bit.
I'll take care, I'll, tomorrow, I'll be on my tractor, putting that in the, tomorrow, I promise you, I'm sorry.
Everybody get me put on February, I'll wait for that. Y'all look at me like I'm crazy.
Well, we're not in the meeting, we're not, we're not in the, this is comments, citizens' comments, I hate to be out of order, and that's just way out of order. We'll send, we'll send an email, email, we're gonna.
Send an email?
Yeah, we'll send an email out.
But I need it back on, and I need it public here.
Okay.
I know, I know.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we got some meaning in here, and I thank y'all for coming, y'all, if you have not, I doubt they have ever been aware, but, um, cleaned up or scraped, most streets in the town, the object of the game was to communicate with the public, not for you to sit on the front porch and watch somebody else, somebody cleaning your street up, it's to get you involved, and not that you were fuming, but to hold your, um, neighbor or whoever accountable.
Right.
They will not be throwing out these chicken boxes, you can go down Hall Street there, they can clean it up today, and tomorrow, it'll be everywhere, then somebody's complaining. Take part in it, uh, Duke has one or two that does help, they can't do without, and the little bit that they do do, get done, um, other streets come to the back, when everything we do in town could be a positive step forward.
Right.
It's part of thing, Duke come in and Duke I'll support you hundred percent when It's part of the thing. You come in and you, I'll support you hundred percent when you're right. But tonight, I'm ashamed of you and everything you represent for bringing up this kind of foolishness, especially when you lay down the law, what it was gonna be, it was gonna be this way. And I go along with everything they say. Who can hear for the audience back here with the effect of some, some of the noise down there? I call them down and say, shh, 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 I can't hear. Sir, and you sit there and communicate with him back and forth, green going on, that, that ain't no professional about this whole thing. If my tax money's going for this foolishness, I just, I just gonna take my tax money and put it somewhere else. I won't see positive change. Not back and forth digging all the time. Their opinions is just as important as yours or mine, and yours too, the old tax money. How about when the, I'm all for the ambulance thing, don't get me wrong, but there's other things to look at. You being charged, I think, about fifty dollars a year on taxes for emergency services. True? Is that on your little tax receipt?
Yeah.
All right. What's gonna happen when they take your fireproofs and put them out somewhere? Your taxes are gonna look. So are we gonna be a tax break on that one thing I'm building? Me personally, I don't care, because we all need a service, you know, but it's just something to think about. Don't wait to after the fact to come up with solutions. So I, I, I thank all, all the council members for, uh, coming up with the right questions, and holding your, holding your ground, just like you. If you think that's wrong about it, I'm all for it. Now come here, campaign. I ain't into that.
I ain't in that. I might not even run again.
It don't look like it's you.
I might not even run again.
Well, that, that's, that's you.
Exactly. And I'm not campaigning, I'm gonna tell you that in my thing right now. I work hard at what I do. And I told everybody here that I wasn't gonna put nothing in my hands, that when I let go of it, it wasn't better than when I grabbed it. And you look at this town, you see that dog, John Martin? Yeah. I showed you an email where that came, how that got here. And I didn't ask the council for that, but I was working on it, and it came to our town.
That might work with the people.
Yeah.
You, you create your own problems sometimes.
Well, remember, uh, you, but you just remember who apologized. You remember who apologized for the way they acted tonight.
I ain't the one, I'm the nobody.
I, I know who you want, but I did. I apologized to the people and this council.
Every time, every time something comes up, you apologize.
That's right.
You're tired of it.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm even being, I'm tired of a lot of things too.
Well, that's been the way it's been.
Yeah, I'm tired of a lot of things too.
Well, that's been the way it's been.
And that's why it's twenty twenty-five, and it's gonna be a little bit different, as long as I'm in it.
Well, you can be, you call yourself what you want.
That's right. I can call myself what I am, though.
You might be about to say.
Well. Anyhow, anybody else, anybody got any other questions before we get to the end of this meeting? I moved, you good, Jer?